The Tuesday, May 27th, 2025, meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Gottlieb.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Otteway.
Here.
Mayor Protem Schlegel.
Here.
And Mayor Hanley.
Here. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have anyone to... or do we have a motion on that agenda? Sorry, I'm trying to find something else. Protem Schlegel.
I would make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
A second. Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
No.
All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This is what I was trying to find, was the announcement. I believe I had one announcement on our bike safety days, but I do not have it sitting in front of me. Would you like to take that for me, Karen?
Actually, you know what? Deputy City Manager, would you like to just talk about that active transportation plan with those dates?
Yes.
Absolutely. So, I was gonna do this at the end of the meeting, but this is great. It's at the top of the meeting, everyone's attention. So, we are conducting active transportation planning for the city of Marquette right now, and what that means is basically how are we getting around our community that is not in a car, truck, or motorcycle. So, focusing on walking, biking, rolling, e-biking, all the pedestrian ways to travel. So, we're working on a plan right now, and over the next two days, we're going to have some public information opportunities. We'll have pop-up events throughout the day, and then we'll have longer evening workshops on both nights. Tomorrow's evening workshop will go from 5:00 to 7:00 at Marquette Commons, and then on Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Black Rock's Brewery. So, trying to meet people where they are and provide... get people to provide some input on the planning that we're doing. And there's also an online survey with an interactive vision map that kind of shows some of the recommendations that we've come up with so far and gives citizens an opportunity to share their input.
Thank you so much, Sean. All right, that brings us to boards and committees. We have two reappointments in front of us. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move we reappoint Madeleine Goodman to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending 6/1/2028, and George Patrick to the Marquette Area Waste Water Treatment Advisory Board for a term ending of 6/1/2028.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Otteway?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a thank you for the two of them. I know they've been serving for a while now, and I really appreciate, once you get the knowledge to serve on a committee, that they will be staying on these committees.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll just echo Commissioner Davis. I served with George Patrick on a couple of different boards. He's been around forever. It's awesome to see our citizens in this city caring so much that they stay on these boards for long periods of time. I think we're pretty lucky to have people that do that. So, bravo to both of them. Thank you.
Any other discussion? With that, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our first public comment portion of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when speaking. And also, just as a reminder, I want to mention that the time for commissioners to comment on things said to them in public comment is at the end of the meeting. So, if you wait until then for an answer to any questions or comments you may have. With that, do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
Hi, good evening. Very good to see many of you again. I really wanted to focus my comments this evening mostly on my gratitude, both for the commission, for...
Can you say her name again?
Oh, yes, sorry. Chelsea Wilkinson, representing Room at the Inn, address 447 West Washington. Thank you. Thank you so much to the commission for hearing out a packed room about a month ago, and your willingness to push out the vote for us to have an opportunity to get together and have a robust conversation about the ways that we could improve the ordinance as formerly put forward. And so, thank you to City Manager Kovacs, Deputy City Manager Hobbins, Chief Grimm, Detective Benson, and my board chair, Will Sullivan, for attending that meeting to have that robust discussion about ways that we could tweak that ordinance to make it less harmful for the folks that Room at the Inn serves, but also gives the police department the latitude they needed to keep our community safe. So, there is one thing in that, as you all, I'm sure that there will be a brief discussion around that. So, I'll let you guys do that. But I do really appreciate also the opportunity to revisit it in six months, and I would also certainly encourage the idea to reinstitute some sort of homelessness task force. It's my understanding that prior to COVID, there was a pretty robust task force that was made up of governmental agencies, public agencies, and of course, nonprofit agencies that were really working together to come up with solutions that don't just kind of lean on the short-staffed and underfunded nonprofits to do all of that work. So, I would certainly encourage all of you to be potentially a part of that, or some of you a part of that, and to get our counterparts in the other cities, as well as at the county level, involved in those conversations, because it is going to take all of us. And no matter what ordinance is passed, we're still going to have neighbors who are sleeping outside and in their cars. And so, having the ordinance doesn't make these people disappear. So, again, thank you. This public comment really is one of gratitude, and thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. Okay, come on, I had to do that. I'm dressed special tonight because I'm wearing my dress t-shirt, which was given to me as an attendee and a graduate of the Marquette City Police Department Citizens Academy, which was six grueling weeks. I did manage to avoid the physical fitness portion of the academy, which I was quite grateful for, but I commend every man/woman who was involved in this situation, because I like to think I know a lot of stuff, and it wasn't until I sat down at the end of the first meeting when I started to realize, even though I knew a lot of stuff, there was a lot more to be learned. And the men and women who participated in the academy, it's late, it's night, they've already put in a full shift. Probably my favorite event, we went over to Northern to do the actual training. They didn't let us do any of the crawling around on the floor, but we watched them take down each other with Brazilian jiu-jitsu. And I got to tell you, if the Marquette City Police Department says freeze and get on the ground, I recommend you do that, because I watched them put someone on the ground, and that's where they stayed. In addition to the professionalism and the reach-out, the enthusiasm of each member of the public and each member of the faculty was there. They never ducked question, they never dodged anything, they never blamed anyone else for a situation. They faced it, and they gave us a really good idea of how we all talk about how much we love Marquette. These people, men and women, have put their lives on the line to protect us. So, my kudos for them. In addition to graduating, there is a bike safety event this Saturday at Marquette City Hall, starting at 10:00 AM, going to 1:00 PM. I don't know if there's still openings for that, but I know you have to register in advance. It's for children, certain ages, and it's good for anybody who's got a bicycle. And if you don't have the right safety equipment, they will get you a helmet. They will get you what you need. My contribution is de minimis, but I managed to find some reflective stickers that go well, and I'll be dropping those off on Friday, because there's multiple ones, and then you can put them on the back of helmets or whatever. So, this is a really, really good deal, and it can't be said enough. We've got a lot of people out there on bicycles. The more visible they are, and the more they know the rules of the road, the less chance we'll end up with any problems. So, in conclusion, if you get a chance, sign up for the Marquette City Police Academy. If you get a chance to go with a buddy, bring your questions, and you'll get your answers. And it only took me seven shots to take down the bad guy. Fortunately, he didn't shoot the hostage before I managed to take him out. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Hello, my name is David Nireen of the 304 Miski Avenue. I've only lived in Marquette for a couple of years, but I'd say that I really like it here. I feel like it's a nice place, it's safe. I'm here to talk about the proposed ordinance for the overnight occupation. I would really like to help people who are in that situation as much as anyone else. I've been homeless myself. I've had problems with addiction and mental health in the past. And I think the real way to help people in that situation, though, is putting more money into the reasons that they're there, which is usually addiction, a lack of job skills, or problems with their mental health. Allowing overnight occupation of property isn't going to solve those problems. When I was in that state, if someone had allowed that, I never would have gotten out of that situation. It just seems... I've been in large metro areas, lived in them for years, that allowed these kind of ordinances. And while it might help people at first, or for a few months, the police force is quickly overwhelmed. Everyone who is a bad actor, there's many that aren't, but those who are, you know, it could be from Crystal Falls to Detroit, they'll learn this is a place they can go. And I don't want to see Marquette become that kind of place. I don't need a gun when I leave my house. I did where I lived before, just to go to my garage. I would like to see, you know, something go into something that actually helps those people get better, than just, you know, putting a Band-Aid on the problem or a stopgap. And I've even done work for a lot of these places that help people, too, in my job. And it's... I would like to help them, but I just don't think that this will do it. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Anyone else?
Dave Campano, 1711 Grandview Drive, Salt, Marquette. Happy birthday. I was going to speak tonight because I thought the anti-fluoride crowd was coming, but they're not here, so I'm not going to bore you with the fluoride talk. You've heard it all. I just want to say, they've been very active. They've been going to Nagani City Commission, Ishbrun City Commission. I've been going there with staff from the County Health Department and dentists, because we just... we try to give our pro-fluoride side of the conversation. But these people are really adamant about fluoride. They don't want... not a lot of them, but they are the squeaky wheel. So, this is, you know, it's countywide, they're going to be back here, you're going to hear it, and we'll be back to talk against them. So, and I'm sure you know that. The only thing I want to say about fluoride is we're very fortunate here in Marquette. We have very good water, we've got a very good water department. And the one thing I want you to know, fluoride at .7 parts per million, which was what they put in the water, is completely safe, has never caused any problem. If that's all you do is drink that water, you're never going to have a health issue. Why they say you have health issues is a whole nother story. You'll hear about it later. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, public comment is now closed, which brings us to our presentation of the evening, which is recognition of city retiree Battalion Chief Brian Talvansari, Fire Chief Ian Davis. Got you. It's a complicated one.
Evening, Commissioners. Unfortunately, Brian couldn't be with us tonight, but I do have a few quick words to say about his career with us over the years. To start, Brian grew up in the copper country, and he started his firefighting career on the Alaway Volunteer Fire Department. After attaining his fire science degree at Lakes Period State University, he signed on with the Menominee Fire Department, and then obviously with the Marquette City Fire Department. Brian worked his way up from firefighter all the way to battalion chief. During his career, he served the community in many ways, including as an EMT, rental inspector, fire investigator, and hazardous materials technician. Brian also served many years on the Michigan Fire Safety Board in Lansing, and attained Managing Officer certification through the National Fire Academy. We'd like to thank Brian for his years of exceptional service and congratulate him on his retirement. We wish him well, and he will obviously be missed. Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have any comments on this? All right, I'll just say thank you so much. Twenty-seven years of service is quite a long time, and he will be sorely missed. This brings us to our public hearing for the evening, the Single Lots Special Assessment Rule Number 592. City Clerk, can we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Section 40-21 of the Marquette City Code requires that when an improvement shall have been made by the city upon or in respect to any single premises, the expense of which is chargeable against such premises and the owner thereof under the provisions of this chapter, and is not of that class required to be prorated among several lots and parcels of land in a special assessment district, an account of the cost to be charged to the owner shall be reported to the city treasurer, who shall immediately bill the owner if known. The city code further requires that when the city treasurer determines that a number of properties have had outstanding bills for a sufficient time, the treasurer shall notify the city assessor, who shall prepare a single lot assessment rule and schedule a public hearing before the city commission on that rule. Impacted property owners receive notification of the time and place of this hearing in accordance with city code requirements. Fiscal effect: the unpaid charges reflected on this assessment rule total $844.80. Recommendation: confirm Single Lots Assessment Rule Number 592 and authorize the mayor to sign the warrant. Alternatives: as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Now, members of the public wishing to speak on this public hearing, we now have three minutes to do so in public comment. Remember, these comments will be just related to this public hearing. Do we have anyone who is wishing to speak about the public hearing?
Mine is 591, not 592.
One second.
I know 591 was last year. I would assume that was a typo, if that's a current letter that went out.
You can bring the letter up to the city clerk and show them real quick and see if... make sure if that's your property.
Mine's about mowing law.
I mean, if it was a recent letter, I mean, it comes from the assessing office, but I'm assuming that if it was a recent letter, it would be about this special assessment.
Okay. So, that... consider your letter to be 592, then, would be my guess? Did you have anything you wanted to say on this?
Yeah, well, it's...
Or...
It's about the same property.
You can come up to the podium, though, sir.
Yeah.
Sir.
So, this is for $295 unpaid charges for mowing? That's not what you all said.
If you would step to the podium and state your name and physical address, then we can...
So, this is... I am Marcus Cook. I live at 214 North Fifth Street. It's like two blocks that way, really steep hill. This letter I got for special assessment was for unpaid mowing, $295. I don't know if... that sounds way different than what I just heard, but that's why I'm here, because I got this letter that says so.
Can I kick this over to our city attorney really quickly? Am I allowed to do that, or do I have to wait till the end of public comment?
Okay. So, just for clarification, the public hearing is for the three separate assessments that are on there totaling $844.80. There are three separate lots, of which the one that we had just heard about is $295 of that $844.80. So, there are other ones that are not related to this property.
Oh, so I'm just one of the ones that is within 591?
This is one of three.
Okay, so, okay. So, I'm just one of the within 591?
Yes.
Okay.
No problem.
Makes sense, makes sense.
Did you have any more public comment on this?
Oh, hell yeah.
Okay.
So, this is about for unpaid charges for mowing. I've got so much thoughts. So, I live like... it's like two blocks, two and a half blocks that way. It's like one of the steepest hills in Marquette. And it's for not mowing, but the... it's so, like, not specific for what actually entails, what like makes you at fault for doing that. Like, turf grass is technically an invasive species. Like, we are not like... we're not growing corn out here. We're not... I live on a hill. It's like my turf grass, like, it can't grow there. It has a bunch of like sandy soil, it's super steep, any rain just washes everything away. I don't have any natural shade in my front yard. Like, grass does not grow there very well. So, what I've been trying to do is to let like some of the natural, you know, like native species grow. There's like some darker green, like purple thistles kind of things. I've chatted with and like worked with people that are like within biology department, like conservation district, and I guess I should have told... let's see, I think it's Eric. Like, I should have told people that I've been working on, like actually getting that to happen, but technically, according to that, like very stringent bylaw, I was at fault. But I was trying to make my lawn like actually like grow and do something, like grow stuff. And for the most part, it was okay. And then, like this past year, I tried to get it like underneath the like six inches, everything, and the work order to cut it down was like made before the day, the due date for actually... like, they put in a work order to cut it down before the due date for me to actually like have it by then. And it's comical, because that was also the Friday of Hiwatha starting. So, I was literally on Friday, like getting ready to go to Hiwatha, and I wake up and get ready, and there's a, like an industrial mower, like almost half the size of my front lawn. It's like a sixteenth of an acre. It's like an itty-bitty thing, too. And so, that's how I started my Hiwatha. What do you think, like a bunch of hippies would think at Hiwatha, where it's like...
Um, we will...
Licked, like, I want to...
I'm sorry, that is the three minutes. I'm sorry, I have to stop you there.
I... okay. Yeah, I should have practiced, I guess, but come on, we're Michigan. We should have natural...
I'm sorry, sir, thank you.
We should be protecting our natural resources, not your grass. Goodness.
Do we have anyone else for public comment on this public here... or for comment on this public hearing? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, the public comment is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Just so we can have a discussion, I move that we confirm Single Lot Assessment Rule Number 592 and authorize the mayor to sign the warrant.
All right, a second. Commissioner Protem Schlegel?
I'll second the motion.
And any discussion? Commissioner Gottlieb?
Really get the motion, just so we can have a discussion.
Okay. Did you have any discussion to start?
I... given the public comment, I feel my heart goes out to Mr. Cook, and I understand what he's trying to do, having done and having watched others do similar things to avoid turf grass. I find turf grass to be... I don't understand the need for turf grass either. However, we do have our neighborhoods to consider, and this is a tough one, and I don't know what to do here. And I'm hoping that those more senior on the city commission than I have a better idea.
Commissioner Schlegel, do you have any comment?
I just... this isn't anything new. I mean, this happens every year. I made the mistake last week of endorsing no mow-may, at least for myself, because of being concerned about, you know, food for bees and other creatures this time of year, and only to find out that, of course, the city does not endorse that. Because of this exact type, we don't want people to not mow their grass through the whole season. So, I do feel for you and this concern. At the same time, I think that we have standards put in place that are there to ensure that our neighborhoods and our neighbors aren't infringed upon, or maybe... and I'm not saying that this was a major issue, but anything from could be harboring, I don't know, critters or whatever it could be on certain lots. But I do feel for you, sir, but it's the rules are the rules, and I would hope that this won't happen again. So, lesson learned.
Commissioner Otteway?
Thank you. So, to me, this is pretty simple. We, like we said, we deal with this every year. I think it's important the public understands that we're ultimately putting these special assessments out there to get the money back that we recoup for the expense of us actually having to mow those lawns as a city. So, multiple notifications are sent to anyone that is in violation. They have a chance to take care of that stuff before we do it, but eventually, the city does have to step in and do those things, and there's a cost associated with that. So, that's what that assessment is for, and ultimately, that's why we're here today, to make sure that we can get the people, you know, to try to pay their share for us taking care of it. So, my comment at that.
Thank you. Anyone else for discussion? Commissioner Davis?
Mr. Cook, my heart also goes out to you. It sounds like you have... were trying to resolve an issue, and I assume that you were getting the notices from the city. That would have been a good time to talk to the city about options. I don't know, maybe the administration can tell me if there's any recourse that we could review his case again, or it will stand as is.
Suzanne is going to jump in here in a moment, but typically, those do have a set time for review, and this was something from, I believe, we heard late summer of last year. So, there are several different reminders and notices, especially even prior to coming to this level, especially with setting the public hearing and whatnot as well. So, unfortunately, I think that time is expired. The recommendation going forward is if this is something truly wanting to explore the natural habitat, natural landscaping, we do have some resources available for that that are low or no cost for education purposes, because we do want to avoid those invasive species, which can start very quickly. So, Suzanne, do you want to mention anything about the timeline, too?
The only thing I want to mention is that, you know, our zoning department tends to do everything they can to work with people. They send multiple notices. If it got to the point that mowing needed to happen, it's because they saw no activity on those notices that had been sent out, and it's not typically one. When I deal with them, it's typically several, as well as other attempts to contact homeowners. When I deal with them, it's typically several as well as other attempts to contact homeowners. I also note a couple of things. One, so this, as Commissioner Otte mentioned, this is reimbursement for the expense the city incurred to then follow up on that when it wasn't done by the homeowner. Also, you may recall that we recently amended our ordinance to allow for other things besides turf grass as long as the homeowner gets the certification or maybe certification, but works with the conservation, local conservation group to get that certified that it's not invasive species and that it meets the criteria that they set forth to, to allow something other than turf grass.
Commissioners, any other comment? Commissioner Gottlieb?
Again, I feel bad for Mr. Cook, but it does sound like the rules have to, are the order of, the ordinance have been followed and I would encourage Mr. Cook to start over again and this time try to find a way to work within the rules. I feel bad, but we have to do what we have to do.
Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, a question for your staff here. You know, these notices and communications, do they explain for residents reading them either, you know, timelines or who to contact or they wish to discuss the matter? I mean, is that kind of information included in these notices?
Typically, they're pretty detailed, including the reference to the code section that's been violated, exactly what's been violated, what needs to be done to correct it, a timeframe to do that, as well as a name, phone number, and maybe even email address, who to contact and zoning with any questions.
And frequently, these are complaint based too. So someone filed a complaint and took the time to call.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Well, I too feel for the situation. I do know that city staff followed all protocols and this is expenses that we have already incurred that we do need to be reimbursed for. I do encourage, looking at our ordinance that we just passed, I think last month, 25-03, which we'll explain to you. And if you stay till afterwards, I can show you where to grab that. It'll explain to you how we can, how you can go about doing a natural lawn in the city with getting it all, with following all the rules, so this won't happen in the future. But if there's no other comments from the commission, that, I will bring that to a vote, which I believe, nope, it's not a roll call vote. Is it? Sorry. Okay. So I will bring that to a vote. All, all in a, if you approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
No, sorry, yes is all I'm saying.
At least I'm not the only one. All right, motion passes seven to zero. All right, let me try and find where I'm at. Sorry, I jumped things trying to find that agenda. All right, the next we have is our consent agenda, which is a roll call vote. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Larson?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Otte?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, city clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schlegel?
Yes.
Mayor Hanley?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to unfinished business. Ordinance number 25-02, overnight occupation of public property, which again will be a roll call vote. City clerk, can you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is recommending an ordinance attached in order to establish clear limitations on the overnight occupation of public property. Per city charter, an ordinance cannot be adopted at the meeting at which it is introduced. This ordinance was introduced at the commission's March 31st meeting. Then on April 14th, the commission considered adoption of the ordinance, ultimately voting to postpone action to this meeting. During the April 14th meeting, the commission requested that staff clarify the intent of the ordinance. The proposed ordinance has been amended and now includes a new section 22-36, which further elaborates on the city's process for handling the disposition, removal, handling, and storage of unauthorized items. Items will be handled in accordance with the city police department's existing procedure for managing lost and found property. This procedure, attached, has been in effect since 2018 and is informed by state law and nationally recognized best practices. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, adopt ordinance number 25-02 and direct staff to return to the commission prior to 2026 with an update. Alternatives is determined by the commission. And if I can just add, going off script slightly, staff did provide a brief note to the commissioners outlining this in a bit more detail. Summary is, the commission made a motion on April 14th to approve the ordinance that was presented at that meeting and that motion was subsequently postponed to tonight, but the ordinance has been amended at the commission's request from what you guys saw last month. So the commission should just be aware, there's a current motion and that motion is to approve the version of the ordinance that was adopt, or proposed last month. Also, I was going to note that we didn't put it on your agenda cover, but it has to be a roll call vote, but the mayor caught that.
All right. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Commissioner Mayor?
Yeah, I'll start things off here. I move to amend the motion on the floor to append the words "as amended and presented to the city commission's May 27th meeting" and direct city staff to return to the commission prior to 2026 with an update and direct the police department to provide a monthly report to the commission regarding the use of this ordinance until revised later this year.
Do I have a second on that amendment? Okay.
I'll, I'll second. Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Mayor?
Yeah, well, I'm happy that staff did add some clarification. However, I don't think it necessarily covered all of the main points that we were concerned about. It's, these amendment adds to the fact are how we're going to handle people's possessions. It does not kind of, I think, clearly define some other aspects that the commission brought up. There's a second part of the motion that I, I think probably caught the commission off guard about the monthly reports. That's more so because if we're going to revisit this in six months, I would like to see how the ordinance is actually being used effectively throughout the next six months. And that's my motion.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Could you, I'm going to a little bit more detail, what do you like to hear out of this basis?
Yeah, I just, anytime the police department's using this ordinance, I would like to just understand in what instances is that being used and how those situations, I guess, are resolved. Because there's a lot of different scenarios that I can picture where this could be used with the current verbiage.
Commissioner Gottlieb, do you want to weigh in?
No, I wanted to hear commissioners.
Anything else from you right now? Okay. Protem Schlegel?
Thank you. I've got a question, I guess, as far as the amendment goes as well. Is this, I appreciate what you're saying at the end so that we can make sure that the process is, is being adhered to, but is this intended to be a public update or is this a, a general update to the commission as, as, as just an FYI? What are, what are the expectations?
It'd be no different than a monthly report we receive from the city manager. However, that is voidable, so anything sent to us technically is public facing, but it would not be something we're broadcasting necessarily now.
Okay, so I guess in that respect, I don't.
I just have a point of order. We don't control the police department, the city manager does. The only person we can direct to give us reports is that. Does that become an issue? To, I'm asking the city, the city attorney, because I mean technically we could get her to get one from them, but it would have to be.
We're attaching their policies though to an ordinance at this point. I mean, I feel like we kind of are getting involved to that degree, but.
So you, that is, that is correct, that you don't manage the police department. Certainly if the police department says, we're willing to provide that report in some fashion via email or something else, or if they want to provide information to me that I provide to you in my monthly report, I mean, that's certainly workable.
Should we be worded that it's going through one of you two though? Because we don't really want the police department just sending an email over to the entire commission, I would assume.
I think, I think that would be an appropriate way to go, yes.
And just for, just for a point of clarification either as well, we do send a bi-monthly report and that can be something that is easily added if we have more direction on what kind of staff we have or what kind of stat you're looking for. We could add that into our bi-monthly reports that is sent to the commission and provided to the commission.
Okay. Commissioner Davis, did you have anything on this? Or Commissioner Larson?
Actually, that is reported in, I'm sorry, that is, there are some stats that are reported in there for current and year-to-date on some issues for the, in the bi-monthly report for the police department.
Thank you. Commissioner Gottlieb?
I am not sure that that addition of monthly reports is necessary, given the fact that we are already asking for a report by the end of 2026 and the city manager can bring that report whenever the city manager needs it appropriate.
So for, just for clarification, I mean, the police department does keep information. They keep statistics on things. And so, as the chief sort of just told me off the, off the video, but that is, that would not be difficult for them to include in that bi-monthly report, information along those lines. Because they already keep those statistics anyways.
Okay. Commissioner Otte?
Thank you. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. I guess if I could get more understanding on, on why the end of your report is not sufficient as opposed to, I understand where you're coming from with it. I'm just trying to understand why a more frequent report's going to help in this aspect when we're already scheduling a report. If I could just have an understanding.
Sure. And, and you know, I think it's being a little overthought here. It, it really is just, again, we already get reports from staff. I'm just looking for, I want to make sure we're specifically getting information on this. Because as all of us stated in our last meeting where we discussed this, there was concerns about how this ordinance could be used. And I'm honestly a little shocked that everyone's okay waiting six months to see how it would be used.
Commissioner Otte, did you have anything else right now?
Yeah, I mean, getting back to your point, yes, you know, it's, it's one of those things where we already get things sent to us, but we, we get those reports to us without them actually being in the motion. So, I mean, with the point actually being in the motion, it, it makes me feel that you're, there's something that you're wanting to hear out of that. And that's what I'm, I guess I'm trying to understand before we put it to a vote. Because to me, outside of, you know, just, you know, forcibly asking the police department to send us a monthly update, I mean, it just seems a little micromanaging. I don't know that we necessarily need to task them with, with doing that if they're already providing us stats. It's just, I don't understand why it's in the motion and what value it's adding. I want to support it and that's why I'm asking. But I get it.
Commissioner Otte, I don't think I could try to clarify any further for you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. I would have to agree that I don't love that in this motion. I think that our staff has already been very accommodating about how they give us reports every month and, or bi-monthly. And the fact that they're coming back to us before the end of the year with an update to make sure that this ordinance is working for us and does not need to be fixed or changed in any way, I think is more than enough for me. I do not like the idea of pushing staff, not that they couldn't get it to us easily, but trying to make it seem like it's forced is not something that I feel very comfortable with. Did we have any other discussion on this? Commissioner Larson?
I guess, Commissioner Mayor, would you be willing to, it sounded like, including it in that bi-monthly report? Staff has already said that it would be easy, easy to include in there.
I could be agreeable to that. Like I said, I think we're a little overthinking that part, but.
I, I get it and I'm just, I'm just going back off what staff said, saying, hey, it's, this is not going to be, it wouldn't be a big deal to include in the bi-monthly report. And if they say that, that makes me, that makes me very comfortable and that gives us some sort of interval update prior to that six months.
So, Commissioner Davis?
Actually, my comment was the same as Commissioner Larson's, but I'm wondering if we then need to amend the amendment.
I.
Or we could vote it down, so we.
If you don't mind, I have a cleaner route for that.
Okay.
Given where the commission's at, I, I will resend my motion to amend.
Okay.
Just here, throw it right back to me.
Gotcha again.
I move, I move to amend the motion on the floor to append the words "as amended and presented to the city commission's May 27th meeting" and to direct city staff to return to the commission prior to the 2026 with an update.
All right. Do we have a second? Protem Schlegel?
Second motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Roll call vote for that, for, is it for both?
We need a roll call in the amendment?
You don't need one, but I can do one if you want.
I'm, I'm, yeah. Go for it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schlegel?
Yes.
Mayor Hanley?
Yes. The amendment, motion, or the amendment passes seven to zero. This now brings us to having to look for another motion on the floor.
Actually, no, because you had a pending motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay.
You've now amended that motion to approve the ordinance that's before you tonight with directing staff to return with an up, with a update prior to the end of 2026. So that is your motion on the floor right now to vote up or down.
Okay. So we just vote again right away?
Unless, you can have discussion on the underlying motion at this point if you'd like to, or vote.
Okay. Anyone?
And this one does need a roll call?
Yeah, we're just going to do it again. City clerk, can I have a roll call vote on this?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
No.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schlegel?
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley?
Yes. Motion passes six to one. That. All right, this brings us to new business, the fire department, community risks and standards of cover and compensation study. City clerk, can I have the background, please?
This one is not a roll call vote.
No, it's not. Maybe I'll make you do one anyway.
Thank you, Mayor. The fire department, in conjunction with human resources and the city manager, determined that a consultant should be engaged to determine the appropriate wage and benefit levels for the fire department. The consultant will also update the city's community risk assessment and identify possible improvements to fire department operations and programs. An RFP was sent out and six proposals were received. Fitch and Associates LLC was determined to meet all requirements at the lowest cost at $49,995. Fiscal effect, this is an unbudgeted expense and will require a budget amendment. Recommendation, approve the Fitch and Associates LLC proposal for consulting services for $49,995 and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Do I have a motion? Commissioner Larson?
I move to approve the Fitch and Associates LLC proposal for consulting services for $49,995 and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
A second? Commissioner Otte?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just think that this study is just an important step to support our firefighters and plan for our future needs.
Any discussion, Commissioner Otte?
We agree.
Any discussion from anyone else? All right, with that, we'll bring it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our last public comment of the evening. Public comments, again, may not exceed three minutes per person and please state your name and physical address if you haven't already done so. Do we have anyone for public comment?
Margaret Brum. Tonight is city manager Karen Kovacs' birthday, as her husband and daughters have posted multiple times on social media. Happy birthday, city manager Kovacs. I'm about to make you a deal on your birthday present for me. I will refrain from singing happy birthday to you during my three minutes of time if during our visit to the island this Sunday, we will bring along a member of the public arts commission with us. Because I believe what we're missing in an opportunity to do this repair work on the island is the input from the public's arts commission where we could combine their two goals, which is to make, make Marquette as beautiful as possible and as natural as possible, with my goal of having the steps to the breakwater be safe, having the desecration of Charlie Kabagum's gravestone be repaired, and also having signage that accurately reflects the danger zone, which would not offend the, and I, I have. great respect for the members of the Presque Isle Committee who have worked so hard to keep it natural. But what is happening out there is we're being overwhelmed by visitors who are either ignoring signs, not seeing signs, or pretending they don't, I mean, I, there was a lady smoking a cigarette on Presque Isle on Sunday, and I'm picking up cigarette butts, and I'm not engaging with her, she's got her whole family with her, and she sees what I'm doing, and she says, "Oh, oh, I just want you to know, I'm smoking, but I don't throw the cigarette butts on the ground." And meanwhile, her adult children are running around as fast as they can, picking up all the cigarette butts near her. So, we have a disconnect there. And what I wanted to encourage the city manager, as she is very, very good at thinking outside the box, is to invite who she thinks should join us, so we could get that input, because I have no problem if the restoration of the steps going down to the breakwater are done with art in mind. I mean, there's no reason why they couldn't be done as a project of the Arts Commission, because those steps mean a great deal to a great many of us. So, I didn't want to say that it had to be done with a chainsaw and a, and a bolt, but I also believe, one of the comments on Facebook was, "This has been a problem for five years." And another, now that the city knows about it, if somebody takes a header down those steps, I'm afraid the city attorney will be involved. So, I wanted to encourage you, because I can invite them, however, maybe a phone call from you would help us, because no one wants to hear me sing "Happy Birthday." I'm much better at typing it, and I do wish you a happy birthday, but I wanted to present that idea so people would know that I'm willing to discuss it with other parts of the city. And I think if they walked with us, they could see what I've been seeing, so I appreciate that. And very much happy birthday, and you have a lovely family. Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else for public comment? Do we have anyone else for public comment? State your name, state your name and physical address first.
I'm Briella, and, oh yeah, Kovacs. 1140 County Road, 192.
Okay.
And we should sing "Happy Birthday" to Karen.
Okay, cool. Start us off, Briella. You got to stand there and do it.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Karen. Happy birthday to you, and many more.
Thank you, Briella. Do we have anyone else for public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed, which will bring us to comments from the commission. I will start tonight with Commissioner Otte.
Thank you. I'll keep it short and sweet. Happy birthday to Karen. I just wanted to say a big thank you to Chelsea and her team for working with the city. I saw the posts you guys put on social media, particularly you. It is awesome to see the type of partnership that you can have as a community with outside entities if you just give it a chance. And I think Marquette has always been really good at that, and I hope we continue doing that. And I love the, the idea of making sure we're talking to as many responsible parties as possible to, to make sure we're coming up with solutions, you know, that are equitable to everyone. So, thank you for your time and efforts. That's it.
Commissioner Davis?
Well, Commissioner Otte, you said exactly what I would like to say, but you said it very eloquently, more so than I would. And thank you, Chelsea, and thank you for all the people around you that worked with us to, to come up with a solution. Two weeks ago, I had the privilege of representing Marquette at a conference on the future of freshwater. It focused on preserving the integrity and purity of the Great Lakes region and promoting economic development. City mayors and their representatives adopted a strategic plan that set actions for industry, transportation, energy, and waterfronts. Resolutions were adopted that touched on Great Lakes water quality, upholding the Great Lakes Compact, managing microplastics, protecting dynamic shorelines, the U.S.-Canadian trade war, and others. The trade between, just for your information, the trade between our countries, Canada and U.S., is the third largest in the world. The conference was sponsored by the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative. This is a nonprofit organization, it's comprised of the eight U.S. states and the two Canadian provinces and some of the tribes that sit along the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence seaways. You know, it was really wonderful to be in the same room with our Canadian neighbors and talking about like concerns. And Marquette, you know, by the way, Marquette was the only city in the U.P. at that conference, and if you think about the U.P. and how much of the Great Lakes, I mean, Lake Superior that we hold near and dear to our heart, it's important that we become, continue to be part of that, and I hope our administration and the community will support future engagement. And just for the record, I did provide a report of the conference to our city manager, and she will use it or share it however she pleases. So, thank you.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
I want to echo what's already been said. Happy birthday, Karen. And I also want to say that, Ms. Brum, I would love to hear you say it.
He said it, folks. I, I...
Commissioner Larson?
Just, just like everybody else, you know, certainly, thank you to Rue at the End and the staff, and city staff as well, for working together on a sensitive issue that, you know, we've had concerns from both sides, both sides, whether it be public safety or the vulnerable populations in the area. So, supporting the ordinance today doesn't mean we're done working on the issue, and I'm very, I'm looking forward to hearing reports on how it's going after these six months and seeing what we can do from there, and if there's reasons to, you know, amend or otherwise. I know this commission will certainly take those issues seriously.
Pro Tem Schlegel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, Chelsea of your board, thank you for what you said tonight and for, for working with the city staff and with the police department. I know this is incredibly difficult. There's, I don't even know if you could ever think that there would be a final answer to this other than elimination of homelessness, but thank you for all that work, and let's keep, keep working towards the task force idea. I would like to see that championed again and taken out of mothballs and put back into place, because it was very much a great step, and it was, and it wasn't just a Marquette group of people there, that was, you know, countywide, maybe even further, and this is, you know, this is a regional issue as much as anything else from, from affordable housing to, you know, anything else that's as important as taking care of our neighbors on the other side of, of the fence or the other side of the county. So, thank you again for that. Again, happy birthday, city manager, and summer is about to kick off here in Marquette, so please be aware of people around you, all the traffic that's coming in. I noticed the uptick in traffic today, and just be cognizant of everybody on the bike pass and out and about, so everybody stay safe. Thank you.
Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. Happy birthday, Karen. Don't really have too much tonight, just want to thank staff for putting as, as much time as they did on the ordinance that we had before us tonight, and for my colleagues for having a good discussion. I did have one, I guess, quick thing I wanted to share. I was recently appointed to the Board of Commissioners that oversees the Sioux Tribe Housing and Utility Authorities, representing the Marquette and munising areas. To my understanding, it's the first time in a long time that anyone from Marquette County has been on that, so some good representation for us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, that is really cool. I would like to say what everyone else has said, but Briella said, did so well, which is to say happy birthday to Karen. And other than that, again, echoing what most of the commission has said, obviously, we didn't fix anything today. We made a step towards protecting both sides in a way, but we need to be finding ways to work forward to actually address the homeless issue in our area, which I think is addressed by addressing the core reasons why people become homeless first and foremost, which was not anything that we can necessarily fix, but trying to work together is the only way to do it. So, I would love to see the homeless task force come back from the entire community perspective. Other than that, I have nothing, and I will kick it off to the birthday girl herself, city manager Karen Kovacs.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It's a birthday I won't forget. So, I, I did want to touch on a couple of the things that Margaret had requested and has been in contact with me over the past few days regarding the steps on Presque Isle leading down to the breakwall. They are scheduled for repair, and I know I mentioned that previously, but though, the city crews were working on spring cleanup, which is really important to stay on top of, otherwise I have many more phone calls other than Margaret. So, they have completed that work and have some ability to get to the other items on their list, including the stairs. So, there are a few that are identified as making, needing some repair, not all of them, but there are some, some that we could, we can certainly repair. I will say that they are not in critical condition where we felt that there was any significant danger there. We do have several pictures, but we are keeping a close eye on that. So, I'm hoping that we can have that by the time that we end up on Presque Isle this weekend. If not, it'll be very, very much the beginning. So, we are working on getting those complete. The, the sign that was mentioned, we're going to probably discuss that as well. So, I will be out on Presque Isle on Sunday. So, there's that. And then, I want to say thank you to, to Chelsea and, and William for, for meeting with us and taking the time to discuss that and really kind of hash out some of these details. I think one of the important parts that we had discussed was revisiting this in six months or before the end of the year, because there's a few things that we have to work through, and I'm really confident with the relationship that both, both the police department and Rue at the End have amongst other county, you know, members as well and community members. But as we head into winter, you know, in six months, we want to make sure that we are still able to, to look at this ordinance and be comfortable with it, but then also if there's any other gaps that we're noticing in the conversations. Because I don't think it's going to be six months before we talk again, Chelsea, just because we do have some work to do on other, other needs within the community. So, there are, there is some information that we'll be monitoring monthly and certainly be able to share that with the commission, as it is important to make sure that, that we're informed. So, I do thank you for that, that conversation, and I really, really appreciate the feedback and the ability to, to make this right. So, we're, we're looking forward to continuing to work together, but I hope that we find some sort of solution soon. Now, for something real fun here, I, I wanted to provide, I like when I get fan mail, and I like when I get some fun, fun decor and some artwork, but this one showed up onto my, in my office, and I do believe that this belongs to, to Pro Tem Schlegel. I would like to present him with this. It says, "Thank you from, uh, thank you, Marquette, from all the dogs." So, I think you'll, I think you'll find some, some community favorites in here, but this is for the efforts for really trying to plan for a dog park or dog recreation area, excuse me, that we're still working on. So, this was one that showed up from the community, and I think it belongs with Pro Tem Schlegel, if that's okay with you, Mayor. So, perfect. I believe that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I will allow you one more second to speak to that.
You know, I, I'd like to think that that early is credit to me for, for any aspect of the dog park, but really, it's, it's a thank you from all of the users from the winter park out at, out at Tourist Park. It is, it's, it's the beginning of what I think is going to be eventually a, a great addition to the community. And if you look, those are all, all the dog names on there of the, from the owners, or a number of them, I should say, but there's a couple Facebook groups out there, so if you're interested, please get on board there. But this, it is something that is truly going to be a, a benefit to the community when it, when it happens eventually, so thank you.
Perfect.
You're possum.
You're possum. And on that note, the, the meeting is adjourned at 7:02 PM.